Call the meeting door to roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember McGee.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
We have a forum.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? Here and now I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in an executive session. We should be out by six, six fifteen. Need a motion? Make a motion, we adjourn from executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from executive session. Any other discussion? Here and now I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're out of executive session, back in regular session. This is a photo op. Anybody wants to see me sign a proclamation? Bring your cameras up. We trade pens and all that. At this time, we're going to stand for a moment of silence. Remember, all of our service persons overseas protecting our right to be here and assemble. Thank you. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask that review of matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call of the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And I'll get my list here. At this time, I have two requests to speak. And we'll go Ruth Harrison first. Ruth?
Good ma- sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ruth Harrison, Florence, Arizona. Tonight, you will consider the design and placement of the signage for the new library and the Aquatics Center. I want to point out that the online poll percentages that appeared in last week's reminder were based on a total of only 28 votes, according to the newspaper staff. Thirteen votes in favor of placing the signs in a vertical position, reading from bottom to top. Eleven votes in favor of installing the signs horizontally. And four votes indicating no preference. Please keep in mind that 70 people, seven zero, signed their names to a petition in favor of option three, installing the signs horizontally, the way we read. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cindy Sills.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name's Cindy Sills, Florence, Arizona. I wanted to speak on two things. Number one, the signage for Territory Square. My first thoughts is not us as adults or teenagers, but I homeschooled my children. My daughter started learning to read at three. And if she had to read something vertical, she would read people's name tags in the store. She would read building signs. But she read the way she was being taught. So please consider our young children, who are really going to be accessing these buildings when you determine the signage. My vote's for option three, the way we read. The second thing I want you to consider, you may or may not be aware that there is a pair of red-tailed hawks up in the Florence Water Tower. They have a nest. They've laid eggs about four, maybe five weeks ago. So they should be hatching anytime soon. That's the first year they've been there. It's been really exciting for my grandkids to watch them come and go, building the nest. Now they're nesting. So please, if you're going to vote to have the water tower painted, please let's wait till the babies are born, hatched, and gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Colbert.
Denise Colbert, Florence Gardens. I have never seen a council argue about signage the way you guys do. We spent three meetings, hours of meetings, about the sign at the bank. We had one, we didn't have one. We had one, we didn't have one. Now we're going through the same thing for the library. Let's get it built. Let's get the pool open. That's what is important. And as far as a two- or three-year-old reading a sign, they aren't going to be there by themselves. They'll be with mom, grandma, dad. And it's not every sign, it's a couple of them. Let's do something different. Let's emulate, oh, let's say Chandler, instead of being a backwards hick town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the audience that'd like to speak that didn't follow the form? Seeing none, I'll call closed to the public. Ladies and-
Item eight, presentations. Item eight A, Mayor Rankin declares April 2015 as Fair Housing Month for the town of Florence and has signed the proclamation. Item B, proclamation of the mayor declaring April 12th through the 18th, 2015, as Week of the Young Child in town of Florence. Whereas, the First Things First, Penale Regional Partnership Council, a local partner organization in conjunction with the National Association of Education of Young Children and celebrating the Week of Young Child, April 12th through the 18th, 2005. And whereas, these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, which are crucial to the growth and development of young children and building a foundation of learning for everyone in Florence. Whereas, all young children and their families in the state of Arizona and the town of Florence deserve access to high-quality early education. Whereas, public policies and programs that support early learning for all young children are crucial to the young children's futures and success of our community. Whereas, teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children and families in the town of Florence deserve thanks and recognition. Now therefore, Tom Rankin, Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, does hereby proclaim April 12th through the 18th, 2015, as Week of the Young Child and encourages all citizens to work together to make good investments in early childhood. Issued this sixth day of April, 2015. We have Mr. Brett Hobbit with the Parent Awareness and Community Outreach Coordinator present to accept the award.
Brett, you want to go ahead and make a speech before I give you the speech paper?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Once again, we've done these proclamations for a few years and I thank you for your support in the raising awareness for the importance of early childhood years. Every year I come here, I'd like to leave you with more knowledge than when you came. And I'd like to leave you with a short story. And it starts back in Michigan in 1962. A suburb of Detroit. And they started a preschool program. And what I mean by preschool is that it was high-parent engagement. It was a lot of home-based early childhood learning and a lot of structured learning in the home. So not necessarily a preschool as you know today. The outcome of this, we call a quality early childhood experience. So in 1962, there were 123 kids. They put in a early childhood program with these parents, high-parent engagement. Half of them, they gave materials to the parents. They coached the parents on how to engage with their children in those early years. And then half of them, they did not. There were initial gains in school. They had positive, they were a small margin where a lot of them did better throughout the K through 12 system. And initially, their findings were really disappointing because it was tough to differentiate at the end of high school those who had had a quality early childhood experience and those who hadn't. But they were determined to follow through with the study. So they followed up with 97% of the participants at age 27. So 22 years after these children had left the preschool years. And their results were nothing short of amazing. Seventy percent less likely, if they had had a quality early childhood experience, of less likely to commit a violent crime. There were far less births out of wedlock for the children that had a quality early childhood experience. They were far less likely to be on public assistance, like welfare, food stamps. And they had, on average, completed one more year of schooling than those who had not been in the program. And they weren't done. They followed up at age 40 with these children. Well, not children, they're adults now. Thirty-five years after leaving the preschool program, those who had had a quality early childhood experience earned $500 more on average per month than those who did not. So what was the difference? What was the difference that despite initial lack of findings within the educational years? What was the difference with these people? And they found that despite educational advances or whatnot, the most important thing and most important determinant of the success of a person in life is their character. And things like focus, motivation, self-esteem, and control, those are all steeled in the early childhood years. Those are the traits of successful people. And those are what make people productive and successful citizens. So what I would encourage you to always keep, early childhood and the parents and caregivers in support of those young children, keep that at the forefront of your consciousness when making decisions about education in the town of Florence. I thank you for this proclamation. I thank you for your continued support.
Brett, on behalf of the town council, I'd like, a couple of things I'd like to tell you. Okay? We're proclaiming April 12th through the 18th as Week of the Young Child. The Week of the Young Child is 52 weeks a year. When it comes to education, what we have here, we have a week specializing in this. Make it more out in the open. I encourage all the citizens of Florence to spend some time with a young child. If you don't have any, let me know. I'll send some grandkids. I encourage you to attend our schools. Go down and check our schools out. The preschool that we have here in Florence, plus the elementary school, where our K through eight, both here and in Athens. Go find out how you can make a difference for these kids. I shouldn't call them kids or children. But they're also the future of our community. They're the future of our nation. And by spending a little bit of time with them, maybe you can make a change on them that we can't or somebody else can't. But maybe you, as a grandparent, a parent, will be able to make that impression on them to become a good citizen of the United States of America. On behalf of town Florence, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Item eight, presentations. Eight C, presentation of the quarterly financial report for December 31st, 2014. Mr. Mike Farina, Finance Director, will be giving it to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the second quarter financial report for this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2014-15. It is as of December 31st, 2014. And in your package, you received a full financial report that highlights where we're at, where the town's funds, revenues, and expenditures are at through the first six months of the year. Just some highlights out of there is revenues. Certain revenues are behind expectations. I'll go over that. Expenditures are within budget. And fund balances are normal and have healthy fund balances. So I'll start off with the town sales tax. That's one of the town's major revenues. Currently, we're 333,000 lower than budget expectations. And that's also 236,000 lower than the prior year. Our sales tax, though, is a component of several different types of taxes. There's the general sales tax, which is on retail sales, other than food. Then there's also the food, tax on food, also on private construction, sales of homes, and then government construction jobs. So you can see that the general sales tax is down 124,000 from last year. Private construction, or tax on the sale of homes, is down 160,000. And then the food and government construction are slightly ahead of last year. The general sales tax is down and we've been looking at that. I reported this at the first quarter report, that there have been some major vendors that have not remitted sales tax this year. And we've been talking to them and also to the state to try to get them caught up to where that number wouldn't be as low or as far down. On the private construction sales tax side, there's just been less homes sold this year for the first six months compared to last year, the first six months. The number of permits is relatively the same as last year. So it's more based on a decrease in the sale of the number of homes during the first six months of the year. On the state shared sales tax, that's slightly lower than expectations, but it is about $50,000 higher than last year. And state shared income tax, that's a number we receive from the state before we even start the year. So we'll come in at meeting expectations because we know that number from the state. And then it's also 9% or 121,000 higher than last year. Vehicle license tax, that's about $10,000 higher than last year. I mean, higher than expectations. And about 39,000 higher than the prior year. Overall, in the general fund, of which some of those revenues are part of, the general fund is meeting expectations, about $5,000 ahead of expectations, and about $364,000 higher, or $384,000 higher than last year. On the expenditure side in the general fund, we're about 43% of expenditures in total of the budget, 50% of the way through the year. So I would call that within budget. And we're about 5% ahead of last year, which is about what we budgeted again. We're still under budget for the current, for six months. In the highway user revenue fund, highway user revenue is about 41,000 greater than expectations and 85,000 greater than the prior year. That's one of the revenues in the highway user revenue fund, highway user revenue. And then there's the transportation excise tax, which is about $37,000 lower than expectations and about $6,000 lower than the prior year. On the expenditure side, you can see we're at 8%. 8% of the budget is expended. The majority of that budget, however, is capital projects. So if I just look at non-capital expenditures only, we're about 38% of the budget expended and that's within budget. Here's a list of the major capital projects in that fund. You see, we're getting a couple of them started. You know, the next quarterly report, you'll see the diversion dam. Quite a bit of that will be expended in the next quarterly report. In the capital improvement fund, 39% of the budget's collected. That's your private construction tax that I spoke about earlier. And then there's some other revenues. It's 39% of the budget's collected and 19% overall, lower than the prior year. Again, that's the private construction tax, what I spoke about. On the expenditure side, you got a total budget of about $19.9 million, of which $3,500,000 has been spent to date. Here's a list of the major projects in that fund. And you can see the, particularly the library Aquatics and Recreation Complex. And this is, again, this is only through December on the cash basis, where about 10% of that project has been expended so far. Again, next quarter will be quite a bit higher. As you can see, the work going on just to the west of the town hall. In the utility funds, the water fund revenue is about 39% of the budget is collected to date. And this fund is also within budget. And the same is for the wastewater. The revenue is about 31% of the budget is collected to date and it's also within budget. So that, this is just a highlight of the financial report. The financial report that you have in your packet will also be placed on the town's website. That's a little more detailed, has a lot more information in it. And with that, I'll be here for any questions.
Member of the council, have any questions?
John? I have a question. On these capital improvements, do we have to spend all our money by what date?
That's correct. Because of the expenditure limitation that the town will be subject to next fiscal year, we've said that we are only starting projects that we know will be finished by June 30th because any funds that need to be carried forward into next year will count against the expenditure limitation. So projects that are started must be completed by June 30th.
Well, at one of our previous meetings, someone mentioned that the library might not be done. Is that, is that the case?
Brian, would you like to-
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, Council. At this point in time, and Brian can jump in. At this point in time, the fields and the Aquatics Center should be completed by the beginning or the middle of June. Right now, the library, they're trying to make up days from being closed for raining. So until they get all the brick up and going, they don't have a final date on that yet. It's moving quickly, but they won't have a final date until the masonry's completed.
What happens if we don't make that date?
There's a number of options. If the expenditure limitation, with expenditure limitation, there's a number of options we can bring back to council. We can either try and find it in the existing budget or we can come up with another proposal to try and get that completed. Our direction at this point to Low Mountain is to get that thing done by June 30th.
Thank you. And I would assume that the majority of that will be done by June 30th?
Well, the bill has to be paid by June 30th, right?
The expenses must be completed by June 30th. We, I mean, the bills, we may get invoices after June 30th. However, the work must be completed by June 30th for it to count against this year as opposed to next year.
Okay, thank you.
It shows our revenue's down about 15 to 20% on the most of the things. What you're, where are you looking at the budget actually coming in, anticipated revenues coming in at?
Just to start working on the 2015-16 budget, I'm basing an estimate on where it's at right now. And that's a conservative estimate. So I won't take into account any revenues that I'm sure will collect from vendors that are behind on their payments. So I've revised the projection downward for this current fiscal year just to make sure that we have a balanced budget for next year.
Okay. Now, any other questions? Okay, that looks like we have any. Mike, thank you very much.
You.
Item nine, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, adoption of resolution number 1505-15. A resolution of the town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, authorizing the town to enter into a grant agreement with the city of Tucson Police Department regarding the Arizona high-intensity drug trafficking area. Item B, adoption of resolution number 1506-15. A resolution of the town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, accepting non-exclusive public road rights of ways from Arizona State Land Department for an extension of Merle Ranch Parkway and Franklin Road and authorizing an execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Item C, approval of an exclusive traffic signal easement between the town of Florence and Southwest Value Partners. Item D, favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control for the Penale County Historical Society Museum's application for a special event liquor license for a fundraiser being held May 23rd, 2015, at Penale County Historical Society and Museum. Item E, favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control on the Arizona Parks and Recreation Fellowship application for Cinco de Mayo event on May 2nd, 2015, at Padilla Park. Item F, approval and accepting the register of demands ending February 28th, 2015, in the amount of $3,579,973.31. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda this evening.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Any member of the public like to have-
Yes.
Excuse me, John, go ahead.
I'd like to have item A.
What?
A.
A? Okay, item A is taken off. Any other? Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Here and now, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing 9A.
Second. We have a motion, second to approve the consent agenda with exception of item A. Any other discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We will have Ernie Felice, the grants coordinator, come up and, grants manager, I'm sorry, come up and address the council regarding item A. Ernie?
Yes. Okay, my question on this is, it appears that it is going to have financial impact on us. But this is a multi-year project, if I read it right. This goes through 2016 or something like that?
Yes, typically it has been more than one year, but actually the funding has been used up in the single year that it was made available.
So it will cost us $100,000 in what year, 2015?
Yes, in calendar year 2015.
Well, we haven't done our budget yet, so I don't know how to respond to that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, and Mr. Anderson, this is actually a grant. So this would be exempt from the expenditure limitations if the council approves this.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
And my question is, because this is a grant, is the money being furnished by the town or is the money coming from the grant itself?
The $100,000 is furnished by HIDA.
It's what?
Furnished.
It's a pass-through, isn't it?
Yes, HIDA.
It is coming through HIDA, the High Intensity Drug Task Force.
The, and a pass-through, that's not going to affect our budget anyway whatsoever. And we pay the money out and they pay us back.
Yes.
The one question that I just wanted to bring up was, I noticed that the grant was for January 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2016. Are they retro-ing back? Are we moving forward? And what happens when we get to December 2016? Are those funds discontinued or do you reapply?
This grant has been reapplied for every year. This grant has been reapplied for every year. And it's been, it's been set for two years. Many communities don't use all their funding in a single year, but the Town of Florence has been doing that for the last, at least, couple of years they have.
Okay. And we use the existing officers that we have, it's not adding an additional personnel. We just wanna make sure that we're prepared with the upcoming possibilities.
Yes, we have, well, and Chief can help me with this. There is a, there is an officer who was transferred from regular to this and which leaves a position open in the department.
It's a, it's a budgeted position that we just assigned an officer to that because of the necessity of preventing the drugs from coming into Florence or investigating them. He's already an officer, if the grant money fine dwells up or dries up, he'll come back to work for the police department.
So you leave his position open, so that way if that grant money dries up, he can be reabsorbed?
Yes. Also, you really need to know that we're one of the few agencies that actually have a grant that actually pays all of the salary. We're one of the last remaining departments that get full funding for an officer. Most departments now have to put a person in the HIDA and then pay for their salaries. We, on the other hand, through ACJAC, are one of the few remaining ones that this is a pass-through. So the officer is assigned to the task force and they come in and around Florence and actually work the cases for us, as well as other areas. But it gives us someone who we can then use the task force for the Town of Florence. So it is a major benefit to us and for the town.
Excellent, thank you.
And they're also getting training, so that when they come back in the field, they'll also know what's going on, be able to advise other officers what to look for.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? Need a motion?
I make a motion that we approve, consent item nine A.
Second. We have a motion, the second, to approve consent item nine A. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten, unfinished business. Item ten A, ordinance number six two six dash one five. Discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending Title III of the Town Code entitled Administration, Section thirty point two three, Special Meetings, and Section thirty point two five, Order of Business, effective May first, two thousand and fifteen. Mayor, members of council, we have met on this subject on several occasions, gonna offer your rules. So unless you have any questions, this item is an action item.
Does any members of council have any questions? Do you need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number six two six dash one five.
I'll second.
We have a motion, the second, to adopt ordinance, six two six dash one five. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Unfinished business, item B, ordinance number six two eight dash one five. Discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending section of Chapter thirty-two, Town Organizations. Again, mayor and council, this was, your first reading was March sixteenth, after a special meeting that we held as a work session. We've discussed this item. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does any members of council have any questions on?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number six two eight dash one five.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance six two eight dash one five. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eleven A, discussion approval, disapproval of a change order with DBA Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Mr. John Mitchell will be addressing the council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, hopefully this is the last change order on the Turner subdivision. If you'll recall, we issued a change order Apache Underground in March of this year to do the water infrastructure at the Turner subdivision. That is, is complete. We need to make some service connections. But they're out of the roadway now. And this provides for DBA Construction to come in and pave those streets, install the speed humps. And their work should be completed probably in thirty to forty-five days. So we're asking you this evening to approve the change order with DBA Construction to pave the Turner subdivision. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any members of council having any questions? Hearing none, I need a motion?
I'd like to make motion to approve a change order with DBA Construction Incorporated in the amount not to exceed one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second. We have a motion, the second, to approve the change order for DBA Construction in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, discussion approval, disapproval to award the Q and B auction with and instruct the town manager to file a deed to include restrictions as outlined in the request for bids. Mayor, members of council, at your request, the town did issue a third auction for the Q and building. And we did receive three bidders. Those bidders were the Florence Heritage Fund for a thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, Stephen T. Smallidge with Happy Adobe for two thousand five hundred dollars, and Wei Hatch with HCH Development for a thousand one hundred dollars, with the deed restrictions as was set by the bid documents. The council does have the right, per the auction process, to either award one of the bids or to not award any bid. It's per council's discretion. And we did advertise this as the highest bidder, noting the fact that the town council has the right to not award a bid to one or all, right to reject one, any or all bids. The council will be deciding during discussions with each entity. All three entities are here tonight. And the council will be awarding it to the highest and most responsive bidder, considering the deed restrictions.
Well, we're here again. Now, I guess the third and final time, if it doesn't get done this time, I don't see us wasting any more time in addressing this issue of a very historical building in Florence that I've got a lot to tie to. And I wanna see it get done. But if we can't get it done tonight, I don't see any other way except to demolish it. So with that, I'd like to ask the council, your wishes on how you wanna proceed. Would you like to question each of the bidders? Or on an individual basis? Would you like to meet with them at another time? Talk to them about it? Or do you wanna proceed tonight? I guess that's what we're, I'm asking the council's desire. And I'll go along with whatever the council wants.
I think we need to question them tonight, so the public can be aware.
We should start with the highest bidder, working down.
Okay. And you have a list of questions that was presented to you?
If council would like to, Mark Eckhoff had a brief presentation to remind council of what is required to get the building up into a stabilized state, if you'd like to see that prior to going.
Just quick, Mark.
Make it quick, Mark. That's it, thank you.
Well, the bidders, have they, don't they have this information already? Of what's required?
Yes, but we would just be doing due diligence to make sure we go over it one more time.
Okay.
Mayor, council, I will make it extremely, extremely brief. Back in two thousand and thirteen, when we started this process of acquiring the building from the previous entity and deciding what to do with it, we had a full assessment done on whether to stabilize the building, restore the building, or completely demolish and build a new building. And those figures just came in, just for a refresher, at about ninety-one thousand is your basic, basic cost to kinda keep the building standing. Essentially comparable to the first phase of what's in the auction documents. And roughly about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand to bring it up to a point where the building could be occupied. Those figures, of course, could change depending on how local the contractors are, how they're able to get the resources to do, to do the work, and also potential modifications in the scope of work. So those numbers are reflecting the architectural plans that were prepared prior to two thousand and six, when there was at one point grant money to complete the, complete the work. The plans could be modified. However, anything that would affect the exterior appearance of the property, we would run through the Historic District Advisory Commission. So if we were to remove a, an Adobe wall on the, on one side of the building or replace it with a frame wall with stucco, certain modifications, we'd have to still run through the HDAC. But that gives you a general idea of the cost. And then there's still some pictures for, for you to remember exactly the condition of the building on the, on the inside. It's still quite similar to, to that condition today. We haven't done a great job, though, of weatherproofing the building in the past year and containing the pigeons a little bit more. So we haven't had much more deterioration in that, in that area. And I'll leave it at that and be happy to address questions.
Any question to Mark? We keep talking about it's gonna be two hundred years old. Let's get it done tonight, folks. Okay, how do we, we wanna call up the high, start at the high and work down to the low and question them on the question that we have here in front of us? And then we make a decision off of that. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up Stephen Smallidge. And I can tell you what, I sure like your business over there on Main Street. I wish you were gonna still, or on Seventy-Nine, I wish you were still gonna be there.
Well, I wish I was gonna be too, but I'm not.
I know it.
My name is Stephen Smallidge, and I am a resident of Florence. And I also own a business here in Florence. I am the Happy Adobe. This business that I'm in, as you know, I'm going to have to relocate. It is downsizing my particular spot where I have, gonna be moving up onto Main Street. This building has been in my eye for many years. She's a beautiful little thing. She needs to be saved. I believe I'm the one to do it. Your tax, talking about your tax revenues above. So what I would ask is, give me the opportunity to resurrect this little thing. Put a tax-based business in there. Not some storage unit, not some lawyer's office, not some little something to just look at and ride by. But make her living again. Free some life back into her. Put the taxes back into the town where it belongs. This space is not crucial to my business, but it would be a great improvement to my location because of my downsizing. I think Florence needs a place that has some historical significance so we can do some Florence items to more advertise our beauty in Florence and our historic access. And that would be one of the things that I would like to do with this business. She's large enough for what I need. Structurally, they're saying, whatever. I'm a contractor for over twenty years in Alabama, nineteen years in Florida. I have not been in that business now for four years since I have left and lived here in Florence. I know a little bit about engineering. This building is not as unstable as it's presumed to be. She has a couple little, little cracks in her and stuff. She's a hundred years old. I think she deserves to stand there another hundred years old. Let her have the life that she needs back, put back in her. Let her be a tax-based business. Let the people of Florence have a place to go to. The winter visitors, the winter residents, I mean, the people that come into this town. I hope that Happy Adobe has provided one of those, just one location, for people to be able to come and enjoy. And it breaks my heart to have to move where I am. But one door closes, another one opens. And I hope this is the opening that I'm looking for. I appreciate it.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions for you.
You're right ahead.
How are you, how are you gonna fund the stabilization and restoration efforts?
I believe if you own the building, you're able to do pretty much your own work. So the contractors that would be hired on this would be pretty much strictly electrical, plumbing if necessary. And I would do most of the work myself. Do, you know, checking with the town, putting in whatever they, kind of, but it, it has a skylight system in it, which is totally awesome. It needs structural beams put inside of it, needs some re-roofing for the new ceilings and stuff. It has a bad crack, a bad washout, actually, in the structural wall on the northeast side, which I believe is totally repairable, either with a new stick wall or even a sub-masonry wall on the inside. The exterior building has a crack in the side to the eastern side. I believe clips in it with a half-inch free bar staples and wire mesh would more than substantially take care of that crack. I don't believe we'd ever see it again in the next forty years or fifty years, if it, if it was to settle at all. My finances, Happy Adobe speaks for herself. I'm successful. I don't think the money is an issue for me. I don't need any grants. I would be great if the town would waive any permit fees and stuff like that. But if the town needs the revenue to help them go, I'm game for it.
So you would be mainly funding the project yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you looked at the inside of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you understand the scope of the work involved?
Yes, sir.
I would take it from your conversations you've made. Don't you also know it's historically significant to us? Have you ever restored a historic building?
I worked for twenty years in the state of Florida. I've worked on the beaches where the hurricanes come through. I'm pretty familiar with repairing old existing buildings and building new.
And you would be doing your own architectural work on it as far as that goes?
Yes, sir, I would.
Have you worked on any commercial projects here in town, except for your business over there?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay.
Sampson, Alabama, I have, Enterprise, Alabama, Dulton, Troy, Defuniac Springs, Graceville, Florida. Major construction.
Okay.
In commercial buildings.
And you were, I would assume, from what you've said, that you're not a commercial contractor or have a commercial contractor to, ready to work with you to stabilize it or restore it?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. And how long do you think it'll take you to get it done?
If you're talking about the structural need that I see that the building needs, I would like to see the building structurally sound on that northeast wall within thirty days. And all the stucco on the outside replaced, if a historic committee will go for it, and painted within thirty days.
And I don't guess I need to ask you what the building's gonna be used for? That's our last question.
It's usually strictly commercial. And this promise I make to the town is, as long as I'm alive, it'll always be a commercial business. It'll never be sold, 'cause I don't believe in it.
Any other members of the council have like, any question they'd like to ask?
Well, just, I'd like to ask Mark, are we requiring a commercial contractor on this or are we not?
Member Hawkins, mayor, and the council, because it is a commercial building, that a commercial contractor would have to pull the, pull the permit. And then the commercial contractor would hire the trades, such as the plumbing, electrical, et cetera. But it would require a commercial contractor.
Well, that's, I don't know if he realizes, do you realize that-
So if that's the route you wanna go, that's the route you got it.
Well, no.
I'm, I'm not there, 'cause I'm not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars to hire a contractor to tell me what I need to do. I'm, I'm pretty, pretty aware of what I need to do. If you wanna consider that a commercial building instead of a historic building, then let her fly in a different direction than me. Because I'm the one that will put it back together and open it for a business.
Well, no, I'm just, either we require it or we don't. I'm just trying to clarify that so you know that ahead of time, because- that, so you know that ahead of time, because I've been trying to get us to slack up on it, you know, on this requiring some of the stuff we do require, but...
Mayor, Mayor members of the council...
Just want you to be aware of it, so, you know, if we award it to you, and it turns out you're not willing to do it, then we're just spinning our wheels again.
And that, and that particular requirement is something that does come from the state. So from the state of Arizona, the Register of Contractors, so we can work with whoever it is on the extent of the improvements, how the building is used, et cetera. But it is a commercial building. It's fronting the, it's fronting Main Street, and the zoning would require that it be maintained to be a commercial building, whether it be an office or a retail building. But that is a state requirement that we wouldn't be able to modify.
That building's on National Historic Registry, right?
I don't believe that the building individually is, but the building is a contributor to the district.
And H-DEAC, I think they would have a lot of input into that.
Mayor, council, the, because the exterior would obviously have to be modified quite some bit, quite a bit, the roof, the walls, the windows, the doors, et cetera. So yes, the, to maintain our status as a certified local government and have the Historic District, the exterior improvements would have to be reviewed by the Historic District Advisory Commission. But we could set up, to keep on the timeline, we could set up a special meeting and expedite this process as quickly as possible.
Well, did we not go over this with the bidders? Did we not tell them that they were gonna be required to use commercial contractors? Were they, weren't they made aware of that before they bid on this?
I didn't see it in my paperwork.
The bids just said that they would be required to do all, I'd have to go back and I can highlight it for you, they'd be required to go through all state requirements, as well as work closely with the Historic District Advisory Commission. We did list that part.
So, Mark, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
As far as dealing with structurally sound, who makes the determination to say that there's stability in the wall, in the ceiling? Is it done by the owner, by the town, or by the state?
The architect will prepare the plans, Mayor, members of the council. The architect will prepare the plans on how they want to approach making the building structurally sound, because there's a current approach from plans that were prepared quite some time ago. There may be different ways of doing it. So the architect will prepare the plans, the plans. So one, they have a liability in that process. Two, the town will review and approve the plans, and three, that's why you have a commercial contractor, because they will take responsibility in ensuring that the, that the building, that the work, the improvements are done according to the approved plans.
I mean, because my concern is, for all three bidders, is this process gets slowed down based on waiting for the determination of the town to say, this will be considered appropriate for a structurally sound, and they have 30 days plus a short extension. And if it's tied up waiting for the town to determine, is it appropriate or not, you're taking the time away from each one of the bidders that are saying, I want to put a bid in. And then at the point of they determine that it's done, and you extend it beyond the 30 days plus the short extension, and they weren't given enough time, now we have to look at the possibility of litigation. And this is a lot of concern based on a small building.
Yeah. Member Montano, members of the council, we, of course, would do everything within our ability to expedite the process. As soon as the architect is gonna prepare the plans, we're immediately gonna look at them and review them, turn them around, get through the H-DEAC process. We've been anxious to save this building for quite some time. We took the efforts to get the building donated to the town from the previous owner. We love the opportunity to be able to save this building. We'll do everything within our, in our capacity to work with the successful bidder, and we will get it done. That part will not cause any delays in the process, I can assure you.
So does a 30-day notice begin tonight after the vote, or does it begin from the time they turn in their architectural drawings?
I believe you're, we're talking about the specifics of the auction bid, and I would probably defer those questions to the clerk and also to the town attorney. But I can tell you, as soon as the bid is awarded, the first steps would be for them to hire, get together a team that would do the work, and have an architect prepare plans, and get those expedited and turned in to us. You're right, it's a small building, it's not that complicated. It's 1,000, roughly about 1,000 square foot. The main thing is how we're gonna keep the walls from standing, and how are we gonna re-roof it. The interior remodel and the, all the other details, we're probably not changing the location of walls and doors. We're just gonna see if we can continue to use those, or if they need to be rehabbed. But the most significant thing is just the, we've had to, as you can see, we've had supports around the outsides of the walls. Those were designed by a structural engineer to ensure that the walls didn't give out on us. And so the structural stability of the building is the most critical thing for the team to come up with. But since it's not a huge building, and because there's already been plans prepared that can be a starting point, and there's already estimates prepared, most people are gonna figure out pretty quickly the extent of the work and the possible approaches to that work.
Mayor, a member of councils, just to address the question a little further, is that what the bid does call out for is they have 100 days from the time of taking the title. So at tonight's meeting, we're not prepared to issue out the title, so it will be some time before we do that. We've got to get the title from the attorneys, and we have to have that title recorded. So it'll be 100 days from that point, and that's just for the stabilization. And council had us write in automatic 30-day extension if they ask for it.
I know that at one point, there was some discussion about the contractors that are working on the library, offering services, but I can't recall if that was only if we had the building. Is that maybe something that could be discussed with those contractors as far as helping?
Member Woolridge and Mayor and Council, actually, one of the parties that's under consideration is associated with that particular team. They'll probably hear from one of those principals.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm just wondering if the gentleman, is he still interested, Mr. Smolich, knowing all this that you're gonna have to, you know?
I'm interested in the building. The semantics of it all, I'm not interested in. If you want to save the building, let me have it. Mark, work with me, and you know, I'm an honest person. I'll do exactly what y'all ask me to do. As far as structural, I don't know, is there's a structural engineer here that knows the structural integrity of the building? I don't know if we have a structural engineer, do we have a structural engineer in Florence? A certified structural engineer? I think so. So what are we doing here, folks? Do we want to save the building? Do we want to...
Well, we do want to save it. I'm just wondering...
I just, I just, I just, you know, I'm a simple man. I don't need, I don't need to spend $100,000 for someone to tell me to put a block wall up.
I agree with that.
And get it structurally sound. I really don't. I mean, but, you know, if that's what it's gonna take, I'll just back out, let the powers that be, take the building and do what y'all want to do with it. So I've said my piece, and I truly wish that I could have the building. But I'm not gonna pay someone a slew of money to come in and give me a piece of paper and tell me this is what I got to do.
Well, if I understand it right, Mark, we are required by state law to have a commercial contractor involved?
Member Anderson, that is correct. Mayor and Council, on residential, it was indicated that if you own the building, you can do your work, you can hire folks and so forth. That's on residential. On commercial, the commercial contractor is required by the state of Arizona.
So you're telling me if I hire a commercial contractor to stamp his approval on something, and I do the work, it's okay?
You're not the first one that's run into here in town.
Yes.
No, this is an ongoing problem that we've been trying to solve, but it's not, you know, I mean, I'd love to see you do it. I mean, I agree with you, but...
If, I guess it boils down...
Our hands are tied.
It boils down to this, Steve. If we give it to you or sell it to you, are you gonna hire a commercial contractor?
I'm gonna try and do what I can to get the stamp of approval, to get the work done. Whether I do it and he says it's good enough, or his license is on the line, whatever it takes.
Okay.
In other words, you're gonna do whatever it takes if we award it to...
I'm gonna try my best, sir.
Well, not try. Are, we, because, well, the bill is gonna...
All I can do in life is try my best. I cannot make you a promise. No, sir, I can't do it. I can't promise you the world. I can just try, tell you that I promise I will try my best.
We're not looking for the world. I'm, all I'm doing, we, no, no, this has gone on, I don't know, several years, and the building is slowly falling down, or going to, so that's, we're just trying to move forward here, and it's no offense against you or anybody, but...
No, I know that.
We need to kind of know...
Well, I think the only way to probably solve that is if we decide to award you the bid, then we can always do the other ones in order. So if yours falls through, then we can go down to the next one or the next one, so that the process doesn't stop. If you get to the point, if you're awarded the bid, and you see that you can't meet those conditions, then it will fall to the next person on the list.
That'd be fine.
Well, I think we need to go on and hear from the other bidders.
I'd like to hear from the other two applicants. Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you too.
Next, we go to Florence Heritage Fund.
Mayor, council, my name is Jim Cox, Florence resident. I'm the president of the Florence Heritage Foundation. We put our bid in on the Coon Building. We came to the last big council meeting that was concerning the Coon Building demolition, and I'm happy to see that we have three bidders, and a pretty nice high bidder there. I will say, I don't know how it can financially work if you're not a municipality or a nonprofit, where money's not as giant a concern as being a private citizen. I don't think this project's gonna take $250,000, but it's certainly gonna take $100,000 plus. And if you're putting that kind of money in a 1,000-square-foot building on Main Street, you're never gonna see it come back to you. That said, it's a labor of love for people, and, you know, people restore old cars and whatnot that absolutely aren't worth what they have into them when they're done. That's my touchy feely portion of this. If you guys were gonna give it to me personally, I don't think I'd take it for free. As a nonprofit, that's a whole different story, because we're working with other people's money and a little bit of our own, so it changes the whole dynamic of getting this thing up and running. We do have a good plan laid out for raising funds to do this. We have some funds raised. We helped design the bid at the last meeting with, back and forth with the council, and we can absolutely perform to the way the bid is written. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
Any questions, Jim, before asking any? Okay, well, let's put you on the hot seat then. Let's ask. I guess you, from what I understand, that you expect to obtain monies from donations and from the IDA, or how are you planning on getting the money for it?
Well, I'm gonna start with you guys first.
We don't have any.
No, private, private citizens, small donations, grassroots stuff. There'll be some larger donations. There are several engineering firms and architectural firms that have softly committed to helping us get rolling on this. There are some private contractors, commercial contractors, that are interested in working in this. Discounted rates are for free. There's materials that are lined up to be donated. Because we're a nonprofit, people can get tax credits for that kind of stuff. That's the financial plan for it. I am 100% sure that that will come together and work. Myself and the board are very excited about getting a hold of the building like this and restoring it, be it this one or another one. This one's a great, small, giant project. There's a lot more work that is gonna be needed on this than meets the eye, and a lot of cash thrown at it.
And I take it from your comments that you have viewed the inside?
Yes, I'm very familiar with the building. I offered to purchase it from the IDA, and thank God Stacy Brimhall and his group outbid me on that and bought it.
Okay. And you understand it's in the Historic District, you're gonna have to be supported by H-DEAC?
Yes, I'm very familiar with the downtown commercial zoning, the Historic District, buildings that are on the National Register and work with those. I'm working with old brick buildings, old tin roofs, old adobe buildings, electrical systems. And I've worked extensively with a lot of help and support from town management on this type of process, projects that I personally own.
And does your group have any experience in restoring historical buildings?
I have extensive experience. Several other board members have construction experience. However, we're not going to be doing a whole lot of hands-on ourselves. We'll be hiring, you know, local talent, local contractors to do all of this.
And do you have an architect in mind?
There's a couple of different architects that want to work on it. I don't know if they're gonna work together, work separately, exactly how that's gonna take fruition, and I wasn't asking anyone to commit to this until this thing is tied around our neck.
What other commercial projects have you worked on locally?
Restoration of the, what you currently see is the Farmers Insurance Building. It was a Murphy's Romance Building. Been doing extensive work on that, bringing it up to becoming a economically viable building that we can run several small businesses out of. Actually, it's standing on its own feet, paying its mortgage, paying its taxes, insurance, and is in pretty good shape. Coin Laundry, I've done some restoration on that one next door. I'm currently have my, I don't have my hands around it, it's got its hands around me. That's that old grocery store. That's 15,000 square foot of big. Just cleaning, chipping, and painting has been a huge thing for me personally and financially. That's my building. There's several adobe houses here in town that I've personally purchased ever since I was, well, I didn't buy them when I was 10 and 15, working with Lapa Cruz, but my parents had bought those. I learned a lot from them. I've done a dozen adobe buildings here in town, residential-type stuff, and currently working on two more right now.
Okay. I'm almost positive you're not a commercial contractor.
Absolutely, I'm not a commercial contractor.
You are not, or you are?
No, no.
Okay. Do you have one prepared to do the stabilization and restoration work for you if we were to give you this?
There's a handful of different contractors that have different ideas on how they want to do this, and we need to find a couple of contractors that really want to work with a couple of the engineers and a couple of the architects to make it all smooth together as a team. Some of the initial outside weatherproofing and stabilization will probably, I'm guessing, we'll get Reggie and David Grinnell on some of that stuff right away. They're both local contractors, and they can get most of the outside stuff done, you know, quite quickly and keep us on our 100-day timeline.
And you, when you, what would you anticipate the timeline to complete the required work to stabilize it?
We'll stay, we'll stay right within our two-year timeline for this thing being finished and the outside being weatherproofed and stabilized within 100 days. Now, if we run into some giant engineering problem inside, and everyone that's looked at it says it's less than, than is documented, it should come together fine. But if we run into something bigger, we may need that extra 30 days.
And what would you use the building for after it is restored? And what would you use the building for after it is restored?
We've been approached by legal firms, insurance groups, an ice cream shop, but when it gets completely finished, we'll see what's able to operate in there and fit in there. Currently, my board has to- once the nonprofit owns it, the board makes the decision. I'm just the head of the board.
Okay. Do you have any other members of the council have any questions you'd like to ask?
I just have one. Since you don't have the capital on hand, do you think you'll still be able to stay within the timeframe without knowing if you're going to have that capital available?
We do have the initial $2,500 on hand to get the external stabilization done right away.
$2,500 or $25,000?
$2,500 to get the external stabilization done. Now, what this is, is getting all that stucco stuff fixed, getting those boards off the windows, getting glass in there, making sure that roof doesn't leak right away, so it's cleaned up and looks good. And we're raising money as we go then. From there, we start stabilizing the inside and the outside, and there's a bunch of different techniques to do that.
Well, your engineers, have they looked at this, or the architects? I mean, because $2,500 to stabilize those walls is-
Well, it's not just a-
Pretty amazing.
It's not going to stabilize them. What it's going to do is weatherproof them. It's going to get the stucco fixed.
Well, no, we have to have it stabilized immediately. I mean, that's the first thing. Then the cosmetic. I thought the way I read it, I don't know, maybe-
Well, if you stabilize it internally and it's still not weatherproofed, you still have water intrusion, your stabilization's not going to last. So there's a bunch of different techniques to get it rolling. What we absolutely have to do is get stucco on it and get it painted, get the roof completely watertight. That gives us our initial weatherproof envelope that's going to protect the building, and while we're doing that, the stabilization comes in. There's a couple of different ways. They're not expensive to stabilize. The big problem being the roof pushing the walls out.
Well, isn't that north wall, if I'm not mistaken, Mark, isn't that- isn't it disconnected on both corners almost? The north wall?
The north wall, yes. It is the wall that's most concerning to everyone because of the slight gap on the top, correct?
And you can see that in this picture here, on the lower right-hand corner. You can see that crack protruding down that wall there.
Well, I'm just- I'm just saying, you know, I'd be surprised if it- well, whatever, I don't know. I hope you can do it for that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Jim. Guess who? Mr. Hatch. HCH Development, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to let you know, my name is Wayne Hatch. I am with HCH Development. I am a owner of that development company, also an owner of Low Mountain Construction, who is building your territory square. Both my partner and I are owners in HCH, and we put a bid in on this really as a way to pay back the town for the opportunity to work with you. Our approach is, we will meet the 100-day schedule. We will be financing all of it ourselves, using contractors who, yes, are working on that facility. Also, we are happy to use any local contractors. We will be working with Jeff Swan, with Swan Architects, who will go ahead and put drawings together. We will have it engineered. We will turn it in for permit, receive permits, pull permits, and proceed like any other commercial property or project in the town. Our long-term goal here with this project is really not to have ownership in it. We look at it as an opportunity to provide the town with a historical building that they have enjoyed and had, to hopefully get a local business who would like to own that building and work with us. We can help them front-wise with getting the repairs done, work out something that they can own to lease or pay the rent as an ownership, but end up with the building and just provide an opportunity for someone or some company that would like to have it here. That's really our approach. It's just to help the town out, because I know there's a lot of willingness. So I'm happy to answer the questions if I haven't answered any of them.
I don't think I need to ask you if you're a commercial contractor.
We are a licensed commercial contractor, yes.
And you think you can get the work done in the amount of the 100 days that we've asked for the stabilization? I think it's 100 days or 180 days?
The 100 days, yes. And what that will take place, obviously, is whatever decisions are made here today, we will immediately get with Mr. Swan. We will start those drawings and engineering and the things that need to happen while the town works on the whole deed issue. We can get those in. We've worked very well with Mark and the permitting process. We know how that works, and I think they will get it through in a timely manner. And really, the first phase is to just structurally make it structurally sound, take the boards off, get the windows in, cosmetically bring it back to what it used to look like, and from there, after we do that, fix the roof, any structural things that need to have, make it weatherproof, have it so it ventilates, clean the whole inside out so you can walk in and actually breathe without a mask. And then, from there, our goal would be, honestly, is to find someone who would like to be a tenant, to own it, and to help get it leased and then fix the inside up. We have 100 days to do that, and then two years, like 24 months, I believe, or two years to get a tenant in and fix the inside.
Would you be doing the work on the inside, or having that to whoever purchased it from you or leased it?
It doesn't matter to us. I would probably say we would probably do it, get it built to their way they want it. We would have the permit on it at that point. I think that'd probably be easiest.
You're going to charge Scottsdale rent?
No. Our goal here is not to make money off of it, honestly. It is just to provide a historical building for the town and to hopefully provide a local. And I will probably butcher this name, but was it Mr. Smallage? Was that- I don't know, Steve?
I was just going to suggest that might be someone you could work with.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, you know, he's- he has an interest in that building. If he wants to do some work on it, we can work that out with licensing issues, and there's other adobe builders here in town that we're aware of. But honestly, for us, it's just kind of a thank you.
And we appreciate that.
Yes, most definitely.
Okay, any other questions in the council? What?
Before you make your decisions on what you're doing with the building, I would just like our town attorney to speak to us a little bit on deed restrictions and what it actually means if they would not meet the deed restrictions.
Mayor, members of the council, just to follow up, so all of the bidders are aware in their estimation of moving forward, the deed restriction obviously will track with the solicitation required, and that's the 100 days to stabilize and the two years for full renovation. If that- those timelines aren't met or other permit requirements aren't met through the town's proper and legal procedures, then the deed will automatically revert back to the town, including the improvements that are done, just so they're aware of that.
Everybody hear that? Okay. Well, we've got the decision to make, and it's a decision that should be our last one on there, let's hope. I'll just give you my opinion. I thank Jim and his group for bringing this back so that we didn't tear the building down. I appreciate Steve's interest in it. But when we take a look at the whole picture, the financing, the engineers on board, the timeline that we're requiring to do it, the experience in the stabilization/restoration work that I believe, and not knowing that much about Low Mountain or HC or Wayne and Hatch, that going with somebody that has the experience, the knowledge, has worked on projects like this, to me, and as, you know, as an engineering firm itself, I don't see how we can go wrong with giving it to HCH Development. That's just my- that's my opinion. Is there anybody else on the council other than-
I agree with that, but I also would like to stress the fact that I appreciate the sentiment and the work with Mr. Smallage, because he is the highest bidder. And I like his passion about the building. He seems like he really wants to own that building, and it's like he took ownership of it, and I like that. So I'm hoping that if Mr. Hatch's company is awarded the bid, that they will really work with Mr. Smallage so that he can acquire that building to bring that business to Main Street, since he was the highest bidder, and that was one of our initial requirements, so.
And I'd like to add to that, that I think it'd be a win-win going that direction, and the building would be in a private ownership rather than a tax-free entity, which, you know, this way, hopefully, it'll generate revenue and we'll get tax dollars out of it. So I think that- I agree.
I would like to say that- I would like to thank the Florence Heritage Organization for stepping forward in our last meeting and coming forward to say they want to make a donation or a purchase of this building, of the $1,000 to keep this building alive. Our main goal is to do that. I see three qualified, highly motivated individuals or groups that really want this building, and I like that. But the bottom line, I see our first thing we looked at was, we asked for the highest bidder on a sealed bid, and it was done by the highest bidder. You know, unfortunately, HCH Development, they could do this fantastic job developing this. I support the Florence Heritage. I think they are doing it for the right reasons. But what I see is, this goes to the highest bidder, which would be to Stephen Smallage. And he has shown what he's done in the past as far as his personal business, that he is here. I mean, he's here with also the Florence Heritage that has Florence residents. They've been a part of Florence, and that's the main reason we're here. All three came for the right reason, to bring back this old building and present something for the town of Florence, and that's what I see. So I don't see that we have a loser. It's just the idea that we need to get this done.
I agree with everything that Ruben said. If he was reading my mind, that was it. Extending that, Wayne Hatch, if you would be willing to work with Stephen Smallage, if he was awarded the grant, would you continue to work with him? Because you have the commercial license, so because he is the highest bidder, should we award him the bid, will you-
Mayor and council, like I said, excuse me, we're happy to help whomever, whatever. We have put forth, and prior to it going to this, there was conversations of us helping in the preservation of that building, and we will continue to do that. We've said we would, and I won't go back on that. And so, honestly, for us, this is really to just give back to the community for the opportunity that we've had to be in the community. And so, we're happy to help in any way. It- we don't go after buildings like this all over the state and all over the world trying to do these things, so.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
You know, I agree with everything that's been said here tonight, but I would like to thank Mr. Cox, because we wouldn't be here talking about this tonight had he not brought this back to our attention. So I think we owe him a big expression of gratitude for his help.
I'm sorry. When- I cannot answer, though, for Jeff Swan in Swan Architects, okay? When I say "we," I'm talking about Low Mountain, so I'm not going to answer for Jeff Swan, if understandable. Thank you.
That's all I had to say.
Well, we've all had our say. We've all heard what the presentations were. Now it's time to make a decision.
I'll make a motion to award the- to the highest bidder, Stephen T. Smallage, Happy Adobe, of $2,500.
I'll second that.
Can we have a motion second? To wa- to award to Stephen Smallage for an amount of $2,500. Any other discussion? I guess I've got one thing on this before we vote. The difference between $2,500 and $1,100 is not that much. I take a look at the experience of a developer or a construction to be able to do the work. As you said, he's not- he doesn't mind helping, but he can't guarantee the architect there. And when we're taking a look at a project this size, we're talking $100,000, $150,000 project, I take a look at the experience factor between a known developer, contractor, licensed and bonded, compared to Stephen who- or the Florence Heritage Fund, who have- don't have the qualification to do that. And if we're going to have a commercial building, have to go with the- a commercial engineer, that's throwing additional cost to everybody, with the exception of HCH Development. And I know we're talking about local people having it rather than an outside company, but when I take a look at it, to meet the qualifications, the questions we answered, to take a look at the condition of the building, to best meet those qualifications, is going to take a certified developer or contractor.
When I made my statement, that's where I was leaning, to award that to Mr. Hatch. But if he would just give Mr. Smallage an option to be the first one to have access to that building, would you be willing to commit to that?
I'd like to call a question.
Question was called.
We got a man that's going to answer a question. Prior- he had been asked prior to the question being called. Ms. Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To answer your question, yes, we would be happy to have them as first right of refusal. We don't have anybody, so if we have somebody, we're happy right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question's been called for. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleen.
Colleen.
Councilmember Colleen.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Councilmember Hawken?
Nay.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Montano?
Aye.
Mayor Rinkin?
Nay.
Motion has carried.
Motion carries. The town awarded Stephen Smallage $2,500.
New business, item C, discussion approval disapproval to award a contract to Pima Paving Inc. for improvements to the police department and senior center parking lot, an amount not to exceed $185,989.64.
Okay, at least before we go into this item, we are going to take a five-minute recess. At least, before we go into this item, we are going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, you want to go ahead and repeat the next item, please?
Item C, discussion approval disapproval to award a contract to Pima Paving Inc. for improvements to the police department and senior center parking lot, in an amount not to exceed $185,989.64. Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I also have with me this evening Carol Michael, who's your facilities manager, and he's doing the heavy lifting on these projects. These are a couple that he was tasked to get complete by June 30th, and so if we have a lot of technical questions, Carol will be happy to answer those. But the first one is the police department parking lot improvements. Improvements we made, not only to the parking lot of the police department, but also to the senior center. It includes additional paved and striped parking stalls under a new metal shade. We had three bids that were submitted. They were opened on the 15th of... excuse me, the 19th of March. And of the three bids, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Pima Paving, in an amount of $185,989.64. We have $120,000 in the budget. By deferring other work in the police department area, we were able to identify the balance of the funds, the $65,989. So with that, if you have any questions of Carol, or ones that I might answer, I'd be happy to do so. But we would recommend that you award a contract to Pima Paving Inc. for the police department parking lot project.
P. Members, have any questions? I guess my question is, which is more important? The projects we had for the 69,000... or 65,000 or the 120 for the project? And I think I'd like to hear from the police chief on that.
Mayor, members of the council, it's my understanding, we were going to do some work on some of the drainage in different areas around the P.D., but it's my understanding they came up with some alternatives that will cut down on the costs of that. But the parking really needs to be done right now. We're parking all the vehicles in the lot across, which is... which turns into mud. And so what we're looking at is the covered parking with lights, and to keep the cars and the computers when they're sitting there will all be under covered parking, which is pretty important for us.
Is that going to be fenced in?
Due to the area, it's not going to be... it's not going to be fenced in. It will close off the senior center area where you can cut through, and then they're also, with Wayne's help, we're going to put... we're going to make the street one-way, so that you'll come into the parking lot, and you'll exit all one-way. And we're hoping to put signs on the one end, so that we keep the general public out.
And then also, I see that you had stuff, including dry wells. Is that all for your drainage, is what you were looking at to begin with?
Yeah, right now, it's seeding the front of the... if you look at the front of the department, where the water, it's taken away all the dirt, and it's actually going up underneath the concrete. It's where the water comes down, it hits and pulls it out. It's my understanding, and I'm not technical, but it's my understanding, they've come up with a different way of putting some gutters and things, and then filling that back in that will hopefully answer that problem. Carol?
Mayor and council, the erosion in the front of the police department is caused by the overhead... the flat roof scuppers running onto the canopy and falling directly at the edge of the slab. We have enough surplus that we can put a gutter on the canopy with multiple downspouts and break up the off-flow, so that it doesn't erode. Also, I'd like to make a point that the police vehicles are parked on the dirt, which actually violates our parking code. You're supposed to park on an improved surface.
And which I'm well aware of, but now...
Give yourself some tickets. Chief needs to write some tickets on those vehicles.
I'm concerned about the elimination of everything that you've got here on... that you're eliminating for... those must have been improvements that were very important to it, and you'd only budget $120 for the project. But now we're taking out stuff that we had budgeted for, that had been requested.
Well, we actually completed those projects. The surplus left on Fire Station One was adding fire sprinklers to bring the dorms up to code, which didn't make it necessary to add exterior windows or emergency escape openings, since they were sprinkled. The Silver King Electrical, we had approximately $70,000 left over after bidding that and putting in separate electrical meters. Those came... that project came in well under budget. So we're just using surpluses to get the police parking lot constructed.
Are there any other monies available that came in under budget this year that we can continue and get the police department to take care of like it should have been taken care of?
Mayor, I can divide... I can defer to Mr. Farina about... yes, we do. We have additional capital project funding, which we can do that. However, what we normally try to do is, when some of these projects close out and there are savings, we try and get those savings and move them to projects that are complete. The budget for the $120,000 to get these projects before was only an estimate. Since we had bid the amount before, we didn't know the estimate wasn't come back at the amount that the bid did. So we create savings in our projects between Mr. Carol, Mr. Mitchell, and Mr. Costa, by being very effective in how they do it, those savings are moved to projects that need the additional funding.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second. Any other discussion?
I would just like to say, I'm very glad that this project's being completed, because the sun just eats up the paint, all of the signage that we have on these vehicles, and it's about time.
Okay. Has the motion been made and seconded?
I do not show a motion being made and seconded.
What's that?
I do not show a motion having been made and seconded.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we award the contract to Pima Paving for improvements to the police department and senior center parking lots, in an amount not to exceed $185,989.64.
We have a motion and second to award a contract to Pima Paving Incorporated for the improvements to the police department and senior center parking lot, in an amount not to exceed $185,989.64. Any other discussion? Harry Nunn, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D, discussion approval disapproval to award a contract to Arizona Coating Applicators for painting of the Florence Water Tower and Tank, in an amount not to exceed $130,000. Mr. Mitchell?
Mayor, members of the council, this is the second project that we're striving to get completed this year for Carol. It is the repainting of the Florence Water Tank on 565 South Courts. As I recall, in the last year or so, I know that the Public Works Department has received a couple of bids on this. And I'm also aware that Carol went back out and was looking for painting contractors who could provide an alternative for stripping all of the lead-based paint. And in fact, this bid reflects some of those efforts. A good majority of the paint can be encapsulized and made safe. Others, this flaking has to be removed, and we will do so according to OSHA and EPA-approved methods. The bid... we received three bids on this one as well, and Arizona Coating Applicators was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for an amount of $130,000. This fiscal year budget provides $75,000 for this project, but as Carol alluded to on the previous project, we take savings from other capital projects and move those monies to where it's needed. And I believe he indicated the Silver King, when we finished all of those improvements, there was still $70,000 remaining in that budget. Also, he was talking about the windows at Fire Station One, found a different way of doing that. There was an additional $40,000 saved there. So adding those monies to the $75,000 budget, we have sufficient monies to repaint that tank. Again, if you have some specific technical questions, Carol is... he's still here. He didn't bolt. He'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any members of the council have anything for Carol?
Well, I just have a question about the hawks there and their nest. Would we be able to... is this the water tower we were talking about that has the bird nest on it? Would we be able to do this after the birds have flown out, flown to nest?
I believe so. Tonight was the first I'd heard about the nesting hawks, but I can check and... I believe the schedule that the contractor quoted me is around three... approximately three weeks. So, I mean, we have two months to basically get it done.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Two and a half months.
John, I agree with you on that. And I don't know what the hatch time is on the eggs, or how long it takes the... I don't know how long it takes them to get where the birds can actually leave the nest. I guess we could approve it. Get ahold of somebody from the Audubon Society, or come down there and have them take a look at it, and give us an idea of what we're looking at on time element, and working some sort of a coordination with the contractor on that.
And the interesting thing about having the internet available to us under the www-allaboutbirds.org, it says that the incubation period is 35 days, and the nesting period will last up to 46 to no days.
And we don't know when it occurred. Yeah. So that's, you know, that's 70-some days right there.
But what did you say, that they have been hatched now?
Now, you're not climbing up there and looking at them, are you?
But I'm almost... I'm pretty sure that... isn't the hawks, aren't those protected?
Ruben?
I don't know.
No, I mean, I honestly, I think they're a protected bird. I think maybe, I don't know, we'll have to look into it, but I think required by law. I don't think we can mess with them until they are hatched or whatever. I'm not positive, but I'm just...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, aye too. This is the first time I'm hearing about it. If you award the contract, we will contact somebody and do an assessment of the birds, whether or not they're protected or whatnot, and if that... if it becomes a major impact on the schedule, if it goes beyond June 30th, we'll certainly come back and let you know.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Well, that being the case, I would go ahead and make a motion to award the contract. That's in order, Mr. Mayor, with the circumstance that we look into the written bird issue.
Second. We have a motion second to award the contract to Arizona Coating Applicators for $130,000. Any other questions? Harry Nunn, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. John, I didn't put that last part on there, because I think we all agree on it, and...
That's all right.
And I think the feds would get on to us, too, if we tried to move that nest.
Item E, discussion approval disapproval to issue a purchase order to Ace Asphalt to reform parking lot maintenance and repair using Mohave Educational Service Co-op Bid, contract number 10A ACE 0316, in an amount not to exceed $182,642.3. Mr. Yousse?
Mayor, council members, back in January, I reached out to Ace Asphalt and asked a representative for our area to come out and do an assessment of the parking lots in the downtown area and at Heritage Park and Town Hall. Basically, just trying to get some budget numbers at the time, to kind of see where we'd be to bring the parking lots up to a good standard. Right now, they're failing, deteriorating at different rates. There's some areas where the asphalt's failing because of the drainage, or at the entrances where there's a lot of turning. There's also cracks, and I think it's obvious to a lot of people, if you take a look, a lot of the striping's already practically gone. So again, just reached out to Ace to give an assessment, so again, we could start preparing some budget items for you. And what they... they ended up giving me back some things, and in talking with Mr. Farina and Mr. Montoya, we've identified some funds that we might be able to do some of that work right now and get that over with. It also coincides with a complaint that the town received with regard to accessible spaces in the downtown area. So what we can do at the same time that we're resurfacing, in some cases, repay or doing an overlay, and in some cases, just doing a ceiling, but we can restripe those parking lots to get an additional, I believe, 11 spaces in the downtown area, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it more than doubles what we currently have as far as in those particular lots. So again, the funding is available right now through other projects that are not going to be done this fiscal year, and we can get this done by June 30th, and it'll get our parking lots back on a regular maintenance schedule. A seal, according to Ace Asphalt, will extend the life eight to 10 years, and an overlay 10 to 15 years. So assuming we take care of the lots, we should be able to get quite a few years out of them before we have to do these things again. But parking lots, a lot of times, are a first impression of facilities, and I know I've heard on more than one occasion about the condition of the parking lots. So this is an opportunity for us to get that at a high standard, that'll match some of the new facilities across the street, while at the same time, potentially addressing that accessible complaint that we received early in the year. With that, I'd answer, any questions you may have?
Any members of the council have any question, Brett?
I think one thing that's really important is the appearance, you know, what we're trying to present to the town. And I think another area is looking at American Disability Act, and ensuring that we have wheelchair access, you know, parking for people that are within town. One of the things I had mentioned, I'd had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Montoya, was Walmart started a program that I would like to see here in Florence, and that's also accessible parking for the wounded warriors... wounded warrior program or project, as developing some locations where people who are disabled, who are wounded warriors, can have a location to park, something we can start new as a community, and say, you know, you're welcome in our community. This is something we'd like to see, especially those that participate in the senior softball programs, that we have something out there. There's a lot of areas we have for handicapped out there, but what about our wounded warriors that we have, that we can start something here in Florence? And, you know, I hear complaints about the handicap downtown. Let's provide it for both. If we're going to have extra parking spaces, let's look at that.
Councilmember, that's just a matter of signage, and we can take a look at that and add that at any time, once we have these accessible spaces.
I have a question. Have we looked at all the other utilities under these lots? Are we going to pay the lot and then go cut it up next year to put a new drain or water line or something like that?
Councilmember Anderson, as far as I know, there's no utility... I don't think there's any utilities under a lot of these lots, so there's no plans to do anything. We just did connect the sewer line over at Heritage Park to the new project, but that's, as far as I know, again, the only thing that we plan on doing, and that'll actually fix that area, so that it looks like it's all clean and new again.
I think we've all seen that happen before, they go put... pull in and pave the street, and two months later, they're digging it up. Correct. Thank you.
Any other question? I got one. Earlier in the evening, we just approved a contract for $185,000 for the police department. Now we're coming here into $182,000 for the projects that you've got. Just... and I understand that you did not go out for bid on this... Just, and I understand that you did not go out for bid on this, that we used a bid out of another Mojave County.
We used the Mojave Cooperative Purchasing Pricing, which is typically usually the lowest.
Well, I guess my question on it is, it seemed to me if we had two big projects like this, and it's not great big, but if this other company that we just gave a hundred and eighty-five thousand to, it seems like that we could have combined the two and they would have had their equipment here and everything and we could have come in at a lower cost on the projects. I know we've done that in the past coordinating with the schools and the town on paving projects. And once the people get their equipment in, once they moved it in, the scope of the work can change that it's done, cost as much because they've already got the equipment here. And that's, I don't see any planning on this, guys, I'm sorry. I don't know who was coordinating this, but it should have been better coordinated so we could have got a bigger buck, a bang for our buck. I'm sorry, but I don't like it. Can anybody address why we didn't look at both these projects at the same time to get a price, better price?
Mayor, council, if I may. First off, the first project does not just include the paving for the police parking lot, it is a project that required additional engineering that had already been in progress and being done. That is an entirely separate project and the requirements are separate because of the engineering that needed to be done. The projects on the parks do not need any engineering, they're just being resurfaced and redone. So there are two different types of projects with different type of surfacing taking place.
Payment goes down on dirt. I'm sorry, I don't buy your deal there at all.
Yes, sir.
We've already got payment already laid there. All we're doing is C overcoating this, pitching up the cracks and everything, but it seems like if you put both projects together, you get a better, you get more done for lesser money. And we've seen that numerous times when we coordinated with a company coming in to pave streets for us or the school and we piggyback on it and save more money and get more work done. That's my biggest gripe about this. No other question, we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the, what are we doing here? Ace Asphalt to perform parking lot maintenance and repairs based on the Mojave Educational Service Co-op bid, contract number one zero A-ACE zero three one six, for the amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two and three cents.
I'll second.
We have motioned issue of purchase order to Ace Asphalt to perform parking lot maintenance and repairs in amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and three cents. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question on the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Motion carries.
Item S, discussion approval disapproval to allow town staff to work with the Windmill Winery and the Florence Future Foundation to help facilitate future landscaping enhancements projects in Florence, to allow for the acceptance of donation of plant materials and/or services from said entities and to allow the town manager to enter into any agreement necessary to facilitate a partner, partnerships and future landscape enhancements projects in Florence. Mr. Echols.
Mayor, council, to keep this brief, Jim of Florence Future Foundation, I've been sitting back there patiently and I have to give him credit in particular for coming forward to us and saying they would like the opportunity to provide trees and plants throughout the downtown area. We've had multiple discussions with them, their idea is that they are, one of their ideas is they are growing a special desert willow plant, I believe locally in Coolidge and in Florence, that once established after the first year, it should do pretty well on its own. They'd like to find some opportunities to place those trees and perhaps some other plants downtown. When they do that within areas where we have excess right of way, so Central Willow, San Carlos, several of the old streets in downtown have extra right of way, we would need to work together with them to make sure that the trees are placed appropriately in those areas away from utility conflicts and also in a manner that where the adjacent property owners felt it was, it was something that they supported. They also would like to, which doesn't require our approval, of course, but I think is admirable that they're working with private property owners to offer them plants planted on their property. And I know that they've, this has been something that's very big for them, also just kind of carries on what they've done with other enhancement projects in town, painting buildings and so forth. So that's one part of it. When we work with them, we would allow donations of plants and some services to occur in areas that were right of way. Now, the other part of the agreement is we carry that conversation a little bit further with the foundation and then ultimately with Harold over at the Windmill Winery and both being aware of what we want to do with the Main Street Extension, the opportunity came up to have plants donated from the Windmill Winery in particular for the Main Street Extension project. And in that particular case, we would, we've allowed, we've indicated the need for some potential funding and that would be if we have a cost in transporting, transporting some plants, planting some plants and providing irrigation. So we believe that for the most part, we should get all the plants and then have them delivered. Because some of the plants are a little bit larger, we may have some costs incurred in the planting of them. And then also along Main Street, we would want to provide a temporary irrigation system, at least until the plants were established. But I think this would be a great project, I think actually all of them are great projects. Anywhere we can plant additional trees would be wonderful, but to beautify the Main Street Extension as you're coming into town and you're seeing the projects that are across the street would be wonderful. We are bringing this to you to make sure that it is something that you support and then we'll work out the details. And also when we're working with the groups and we're doing any work within the right of way, we'll make sure that any folks that are doing work within our right of way, that they're protected and we're protected during that work. We have a maximum anticipated cost of this, again, which would come out of the CIP budget, out of projects that won't be completed by June thirtieth, of twenty-five thousand and that would be costs largely attributed to, as I said, the Main Street aspect of the project. I don't think that will go that high, but we have a cushion in there for that. In subsequent years, as we carry the project forward, that will be contingent upon where we are on the budget, if we have an allocation next fiscal year, following fiscal year and so forth. But we will work with both of these entities to kind of keep this, keep this project alive. And I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Does a member of the council have any questions? I really don't see where it's a town's business to get involved in what people plant on their private property unless we're gonna start a homeowners association down here. I don't want to have anything to do with that.
And I'll-
It's not in the motion, but I don't, I don't think that's a town's business to get involved in that.
And Mayor and council, and I will clarify and I agree with you completely, that we want to do whatever we can to support them in their program, but when it comes to them, the foundation working with private property owners to plant trees, we would have, we would not have participation in that. We would work with them where it comes to planting trees within town right of way.
And what are you asking, twenty-five thousand a year for?
Mayor, members of the council, that would be potential anticipated cost for when we work with the donation of plants from the Windmill Winery along the Main Street Extension. Because some of those plants that Harold has over there are larger, bless you, there may be some costs attributed to transporting and planting those and then also to extend a temporary irrigation line along Main Street to do that. I don't think that we're gonna hit that amount of money, but we wanted to have that in there just in case.
And that would be something you need to take up with the Budget Committee on a yearly basis.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other question? We need a motion, please.
Make a motion to allow town staff to work with the Windmill Winery and the Florence Future Foundation to help facilitate future landscape enhancement projects in Florence, to allow for the acceptance of donations of plant materials and/or services from said entities and to allow the town manager to enter into any agreements necessary to facilitate the partnerships and future landscape enhancement projects in Florence.
I second it. Most men are, most men made in second, everybody understand the motion? Other question? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion on the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item G, discussion approval disapproval of a motion to rescind or a motion to amend the March second, two thousand and fifteen approval of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Option One of Territory Square signage. Both this motion and the next motion are directly related. If council will recall, we had three members of council approach us and ask for us to place an item for reconsideration on the agenda. In discussions with the town attorney, we could not place that item for reconsideration on because that motion must be moved by a member who voted in the majority of the prevailing side to be held at the very next meeting. That would have been the March second, two thousand and fifteen meeting with Mayor Rankin, Woolridge, Hawkins and Galen voting for that item. Instead, our attorney has suggested that we can, under Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, do a motion to rescind and/or amend the motion. In this particular case, we brought this motion forward. The other reason why, if the item had been carried out, this motion would not be allowed. And I do need to let you know that there will be an expense to the Town of Florence if the council moves to reconsider and change. It's the lighting and electrical that is associated with the building. So at this time, if you have questions to the town attorney, he can answer them. Otherwise, if the council makes a motion and seconds the motion to reconsider and it is adopted, then we can turn it over to, or rescind or amend, we can turn it over to Mark who can complete a presentation for the following item. If this motion does not carry, then we do not go on to the next item.
I would like to add to what you said, I talked with the town manager beforehand and just so council is aware, as I understand, the cost is a thousand dollars.
Mark can address that.
Mayor and council, Low Mountain has estimated the cost to be approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars. This amount would cover moving electrical J boxes to accommodate the layout of the signs from a horizontal orientation to, I'm sorry, from a vertical orientation to a horizontal orientation.
Anybody, any discussion you want to talk about this?
I just want to make a comment about this. I fully support the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is not about education or reading, et cetera. It's about an expression of artistic manner of providing signage. It's about diversity and it's about an interpretation of a visual effect.
And I agree with you a hundred and fifty percent. We have taken this issue in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission one time, in front of us twice. Gosh, wouldn't that be the neatest thing if this was the biggest issue to face the Town of Florence? It's ridiculous that we're redoing this a fourth time, just because one individual didn't like it and went out and got a bunch of signatures, but I can't tell you how she got them. Now, I don't care how she got them, I'm not even discussing that. But I would like to see a motion to affirm the February fifth, two thousand and fifteen recommendation of the Planning and Zoning and the March second Town Council recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the March second approval and recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Option One of the Territory signage.
I'll second.
We have a motion second to rescind the, what we've done. Call for, roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Galen?
No.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge?
No.
Mayor Rankin?
No. Motion rescinded?
Has to carry.
No. Now we need another motion.
We will move on to Item H. That motion does carry because we did give advance notice, had we had not provided you with an agenda item that explained, it would have taken five members of the seven, but because we did provide advance notice, it's a simple majority. So we will move on to Item H, discussion approval disapproval of the Florence Territory Square signage design review application. Mr. Echols.
Mayor, council, I think you're familiar with the options. I think mainly we're looking at what would be considered an Option One or an Option Three. Option One, vertical orientation, which was the previous approval. Option Three would turn that sign on its side. We're talking about the main sign at the entrance to the library, the main sign into the aquatic center. It's just a matter of the orientation of the sign and the orientation of the lighting that affects the sign. Both would work and both would work perfectly adequately for the building. It's your decision.
Well, myself, I do respect the seventy people that signed that paper saying that they would rather have it horizontal. I haven't seen anybody come forward saying that they wanted it vertical, so on that basis...
Excuse me.
So on that basis, I feel that, you know, I was elected to do what the majority of the people want and the majority of reaction that I've gotten from this has been that they want it horizontal. That's, to me, I really don't think it matters that much personally, but I was elected to do what the majority of the people want. And the majority of the people I have heard from and have seen on that petition, it's not an official petition, but there are seventy people on there, they are residents of Florence and that's what I've gotta go by, I mean, myself.
And Bill, I agree with you and I stand where you stand. Does any other members of council have anything to say?
On what?
On this matter. Otherwise, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, the unintelligent comment made by the school superintendent at the last meeting, first and second graders can't read it. Well, first and second graders shouldn't be down at a swimming pool or a library by themselves, they should have some parents that should be able to read it. I take a look at the hardware store downside, downtown, the hardware sign, it's up and down. I take a look at the chains that people want in Florence and that some people don't want in Florence. They want us to be old and behind the times and this is part of it. This is where we've got some people that don't see the future of Florence, that see us as being an old country hit town without any vision, without any newness, and this is what we're doing. We're going right back to being the same old thing you see every place else in the country, but you can also see the up and down signs around, but that's okay, kids can't read those either, I don't guess. Maybe some adults aren't smart enough to read up and down either. Need a motion?
I would just like to say one thing is that we all have to respect one another's opinion and be respectful to one another and, you know, I thought the signs were different and like Becky said, they're artistic. And if we have to make a change so that we're not just plain old, plain old, I would prefer Option Two, if I had anything to say about it. Option Two, if I had anything to say about it.
And I, that, I can go along with that too, Valerie, I think that's okay too. But as far as going across sideways, I mean, we can do that anyplace. If we're trying to get something that looks nice to our community, something a little bit different, why not go this way? Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Option Three.
I'll second.
We have a motion second to approve Option Three. Roll call.
Councilmember Montoya. Montoya, I apologize.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Galen. Councilmember Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge.
No.
Mayor Rankin.
No.
Motion carries. Item twelve, department reports. The manager's report is on file. If you have any questions, the manager's present.
Any member of the council have any reports that are any, that they want to discuss with any department heads?
I, I have a, a question for maybe a future meeting. I'd like to have a joint meeting with the IDA.
With what?
With the industrial, uh, government authorities.
Okay.
I don't know how to do that, but-
We'll arrange it. We'll, we'll call for a work session with them.
Okay, good.
Any other? No. Any other, any departments, anybody wants to talk to, okay, call, close, call to, to the department head, call to the public.
Denise Kohler at Florence Gardens. I will be back in two weeks with a petition. And if I've got more than seventy, is that a majority enough for you, Bill?
Okay, okay.
Seventy people out of eight thousand voters in this community is not a majority. If you want to look at the newspaper, was that a majority? No, not of the people of the community. What they came up with was something different, something unusual, something artistic, instead of plain old, plain old Hicksville. What is wrong with you people, some of you? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other call to the public?
Yes, my name is Bruce Spinstremaker. I live at three six two five North Princeton Court in Florence. I want to thank you for tonight's meeting. You got everybody involved, that's excellent. Some people go away angry, some people go away happy. I, I really appreciate you guys taking an interest in it. The people that did get petitions and stuff, good for them. That's what we need. This is a, a free society. The other thing is, thank you for the, the, the Battle of the Bands on Saturday. I, my wife and I enjoyed that. Thank you for coming to Anthem, all of you taking your time to explain the, the special election. You guys made me proud and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Adam from Florence. And I echo, I'm so proud of this town and how we all handled the Quinn building. I'm speaking as the owner of a historic district home and as a commissioner on HDAC. And I, I feel the whole process from start to be, and when you first came to us to ask for a demolition permit, but then everybody pitched in and worked the process and got the town involved because I felt ultimately, I know the council's gotten some criticism for not spending money to buy the Quinn building and fix it. I don't think that's the business the town should be in and if the community doesn't get behind it and want to support it and save it, then why should you do that? So I think it worked absolutely perfectly and I know this building's going to be a gem. And, and I just thank you for sticking with it.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Call to the council. John?
I'd just like to echo what has been said here tonight. You know, I think we've seen our little town, democracy in progress. I know we're going to disagree, but I think we all have a tremendous amount of respect for each other. And I'm glad to see our council work so hard to try to get all these matters handled in the proper manner. Thank you.
Ruben?
Yeah, we finished the Road to Country Thunder last weekend and that, when it started, there weren't a lot of people, but the food was really good and the music was really good. I think that's something we're going to really grow on. I think by the time it was later on in the evening after eleven, when the DJ started playing, it really picked up. I left early, I was already full, didn't want to eat anymore. So it was just nice to see a lot of old friends come around that came from out of town. I think what they're looking at next year is trying to do something a little bit sooner when the snowbirds are still here during spring training. And this weekend will be Country Thunder, so please drive safely and be careful with all the law enforcement out there and those individuals that are, are out in, in vehicles driving around. So good luck to everybody on that.
Mick?
I just want to tell everyone that Shippo made a great presentation at the Historical Advisory Commission on historic preservation. I was really impressed with it.
Yep. Yeah, I want to reiterate what, you know, Ruben just said, you know, it was a great, and everybody else, it was a great turnout down there, I thought, for the first one on the Road to Country Thunder. The weather was gorgeous. It was, couldn't have asked for better weather. So I, you know, I can't wait till next year and that's about it.
And I'll just add, they did a phenomenal job of having Main Street cleaned up on Sunday morning. So good job to whoever did that.
Kara?
Okay, we also wanted to recognize Lisa. He did a lot of the work getting everything ready for the Road to Country Thunder.
Oh, I did none of the work. It was Brian who did all of the work, so he's the perfect person to-
Well, that's, that's, that's true teamwork and Allison Fleeves coming together. Really appreciate, you know, working together and-
And the police forces.
Yes, exactly. So thank you for coming out tonight. And I do, Lisa, can you help me with the date because I don't have my calendar in front of me, but there is going to be at Anthem Parkside Community Center. It's April-
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth. We're going to have signs and banners out tomorrow just so we can talk to the residents about the upcoming election. And if you have any questions, please bring them and we'll have staff on hand to answer any questions or concerns that you have.
I, to, Brian, tell Ally she did one heck of a job down there on the coordination. I was down there with her in the morning, I was down there with her all night with her. It was a wonderful, you know, it kind of reminds me back when we were kids, dancing on Main Street again. That was, that was really neat. And our, everything went smooth. That was one of the neatest things. No fights, no drunks disturbing. I think there was one lady that maybe stepped off the sidewalk or something, if I remember, and they had to treat her ankle. That was great. And, and talking to the people of Country Thunder, they want to continue doing it. I hope that they continue working with us on that. As Ruben said, we have Country Thunder this weekend. There's going to be a lot of traffic on Highway seventy-nine. Please be careful out there. As we talk about democracy, everybody's got their own way. Some of the things I voted against tonight, I thought were in the best interest of the community. Other council members didn't. So be it. Do I like it? No. Will I support it? It's just a matter of opinion on each council person's plate, is what they see as a majority vote or a majority of people. I don't like it when we have one person that can go out and claim to be a majority. She's not a majority, she did not get a majority of signatures. I believe we were given wrong information on it by the, the majority of the people in the Town of Florence. I think if you went out and asked the majority of people, they said, "We don't care." That's what they tell you. They're not going to tell you one way or the other, they say, "We don't care." I wish people did care. I wish people would, would make themselves known so that we could have a true majority of information up here. We'll never get it. We'll never get it. You're not going to get everybody in town to come together one time. We can't even get them to come to vote, everybody to come vote. But we do need their vote come May nineteenth. The ballots are coming out the twenty-third of April. And we need everybody to pull together on that, no matter where you live or what you think, we need to get our votes out on that and we need the people to get out and vote. So folks out there in TV land, because there's more of you out there than there is in this council chambers tonight, please come to our meeting in Parkside. If you're watching on Cox out in Parkside, please come to our meeting. We need you there to explain our situation so that you get the right information and you can make the right decision for you. With that, we need a motion.
It might be helpful if they knew the time of the meeting.
It would be if I had it, it's six-
Seven.
Seven o'clock at Parkside Recreation. Thank you, Valerie. So people, please be out there. Without a need a motion? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, second adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.